Next item on the agenda is an update on the opening of the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Rishi. You're muted. You're muted.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Feinberg. We started last week with communication out to the community. This was the introductory screen. And I had indicated that at each one of our board members, each one of our board meetings, I would take this information and update it, update it in terms of what are the decisions that we have made around each of the different scenarios? And how we were going to, what we are still yet to discuss in terms of moving forward. And it all stems from the fact that, that, you know, the guidance is fluid, as others have mentioned earlier. So on July 2nd, the first communication came out tonight. I'll be talking about what some of the classrooms would look like with a minimum of three feet of social distancing. Next week, our focus will be if we go to some type of a hybrid or a split schedule, what that would entail and potentially look like. We'll have less of the administration talking and more question and answer from the board on the 23rd. We'll make a recommendation of the different scenarios that have been presented at all times. And one of the options available for families, regardless of what scenario is presented, is Haverford Online. And we're going to learn more about that next week. We'll have a presentation just on Haverford Online and what, what that entails. So we've got lots of information to share over the next three weeks with, you know, with, with everyone. Even, and we'll go to the next slide here, and even with the information coming out on the 2nd of July, the Chester County Department of Health already updated or revised the guidance that we, that we had received. We know that there was updated guidance that came out from the Pennsylvania Department of Health regarding the masking. And we have also been informed that the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention will be providing either updated guidance or guidelines to schools with the anticipated receipt of that information sometime next week. So again, it's, it's very fluid depending on how strict the guidance is. That may influence our recommendation one way or the other. It may alter a plan that, you know, that we have. So we are waiting on that information. So our four focus areas continue, and even as Ms. Mathers mentioned, our four focus areas continue to be distancing, screening, hygiene, and masking. With the, with distancing, we now, we can do classroom configurations to maintain at least three feet of distancing in all of our schools. We were, last week when we put this out, we knew that we could do it at the elementaries. We now have measured that out and, and actually today finished every classroom in the high school where the furniture or extraneous furniture has been removed. Desks are in there so that they can, it can be measured appropriately to ensure that we can open that way. If, we know that our buses can operate with two students per seat. And when I say they can operate, that is because in the Chester County Department of Health recommendations, they are saying that you can transport, transport students to, to, to a seat. If we were to do the, you know, every other seat or every other, I think in a previous presentation I had said to you, a 72 passenger bus now goes down to 12 students on that bus. There is no way we would be able to provide transportation at that rate. Knowing that we can put two students, so when questions come in, why I think it's okay to put two students per seat, that was not something that I said, well, two bodies will fit and let's see what we can do. That is what every district surrounding us is using in terms of how they can transport more students to school. With lunch, lunch will be available at every elementary building. It might be a brown bag lunch, but lunch will be available for students at the elementary buildings. We are not ready this week to say that lunch will be available for sit-down lunch, even with brown bags, at the middle school and high school. It may be that lunch is available to students, they pick up their brown bag and they leave. The schedule might be truncated, and I use this for example purposes only. This is not what we are saying, but we may end up with some type of a schedule where students are dismissed at 12:30, they take their lunch with them and they go. It is the lunch piece that requires where six feet of social distancing is mandated. So that, that, no one will permit three, four, or five feet of social distancing when children engage in their lunch activity. So, and we continue to say that the look and feel of school is, you know, going to be different, and we'll talk a little bit about that this evening and also, also next week. So when we look at, this is what a lunch table is going to look like for a student at the elementary level. So that is one of our eight-foot tables. There will be one student seated at one end, one student seated towards the side of the other end. And that's it, how a cafeteria table is going to meet our social distancing requirement. So if you take a look, the next picture that is here, that's actually Manoa Elementary's cafeteria. Those of you who have been in there are familiar with the size of that cafeteria. That is how it is set up with the tables and the chairs to be socially distanced appropriately. That cafeteria will now accommodate 46 students. Typically, that cafeteria could accommodate with the round tables and students sitting together. It has accommodated up to 130 students at one point in time, one period of time. This will be 46 students, and then the gymnasium will be set up with a total of 40 tables that can accommodate 80 students. That is what we are looking at in each one of the elementary buildings. So the gymnasium will not be available for physical education. Our physical education teachers will be encouraged to take students outside as much as possible, or to go into students' classroom and deliver the health component of what they're working on. Our teachers will, you know, have time to start to think about this and see what that could, what that could entail as, you know, as we move forward. Moving on to the classroom level, I'd already indicated that we know we can look at distances of three feet and the angle, it's, it's actually hard sometimes to capture this in a picture so that you can see, see the distancing there, depending on the, the angle that it's there. That room is set up as if all students were attending. Again, this is in Manoa Elementary. That room is set up as if all students are attending. We know that there are multitude of reasons for whom parents will opt to keep their children home, you know, look for a 100% online opportunity for students, and that is going to be available to everyone. So as we get those numbers, what we will be doing is removing desks from the, from those classrooms and getting even great, even greater social distancing. The next is a picture at our middle school. And again, it's set up accounting for all of the students for their in-person instruction. The angle isn't, isn't really, you know, isn't really great, but I wanted you to see, you know, what it would, you know, what it could potentially look like. The next area that we talked about was screening, and there has been no change to this particular slide since our July 2nd, you know, communication topics that we still continue to work on. Actually, one of our members asked tonight about, you know, is it a paper screening that's being used for preseason in athletics? One of the things that we're looking into is some kind of an app that we might be able to use for, you know, student screening, staff screening. So that work is still underway for us to, to take a look at that. Hygiene is the next area important that we've spoken about, and there's no change to this. This is the same exact screen that we were looking at when we sent out the July 2nd communication. And where we have seen a change is on the next slide, which pertains to masking. All adults must wear face coverings, masks, or shields. We heard from, from Ms. Mathers this evening that it would be advisable for our staff members to wear both. We have ordered both because there, we recognize that there are staff members who may choose that. We'll now make it, you know, part of a recommendation, and that will be available for staff members. All students must wear face coverings. We know that that is the governor's order that was effective July 3rd. And that guidance will be on our website so that, you know, people who may not have seen it yet will be able to, to see that. The removal of the mask in order to eat lunch is what mandates the six feet of social distancing for lunch. And that is why those, those areas looked, looked very different. So we could then get to, you know, these, if we take these plans and we looked at them by the phases, if we were going to say green, you know, yellow, red, this is what we could do, or, you know, we may end up saying, we're not going to worry about the phases right now, we want to start with everyone in school, or we want to start in, in some type of, of a hybrid. But for right now, we know that all students can attend five days a week. That's a little, last, last week when I sent the communication out, we indicated to parents, we knew that all students at the elementary level could attend five days a week. We were still looking into the secondary level. Or no, I had said mid, elementary and middle, and we are still looking into the high school level. We now know that they can attend, all could, if we opt for that five days a week. In order to do this, though, time is going to be scheduled differently, different from what students, staff, and parents are accustomed to. So some examples, and again, this does not mean that these things are happening. This is, and to give someone an example, what would you mean that time, you know, would be scheduled? 8:30 may still be the time, you know, that, that children can arrive at the elementary buildings, or 8:40, I don't have it committed, you know, committed to memory. But instruction might not begin until 9:05 or 9:10. That's going to depend upon the, the arrival of buses. Even with two suits, two students to a seat. If every child were to attend Manoa Elementary, and every child who has been transported there would still be transported, there would be 22 bus runs just to get the kids to school in the morning. So once we see, you know, how many students will be opting for Haverford, you know, Haverford Online, and then we'll, how many parents will be opting to transport their children? Then we will look at two things then. What are the number of bus runs that will be bringing kids into, into the school? And then what does the car line become like in terms of dropping them off? So it just, I just give that, share that with you tonight to provide an example of what we mean when we say that the schedule might be altered in, in some way. We know that time will be allocated for children to wash their hands, use the hand sanitizer before they eat lunch, after they eat lunch, after recess. If that's going to happen, we have to make it part of the day. It has to be part of the schedule. So the day is going to look, you know, look a little bit different. We know that the opening of school is going to look a little bit different. And the concrete example that I will, will give you there is another one at the elementary level. In some of our buildings, parents arrive and walk children to their classrooms the first day of school. That can't happen. We can't have that many adults coming into, into the buildings. What I will follow up with very quickly and say, it remains our goal to make sure that we are nurturing, welcoming, and caring. And our, when our elementary principals get to working with some of the teachers and talking about, you know, what can we do? How can we restructure this? You know, we've been talking, talking about reimagining school and what it can, you know, what it can look like. I am sure that they will come up with some very unique ways to ensure that the environment is nurturing, that we are welcoming, and the children feel, feel cared for. We're going to have to reduce the shared materials. So what do I mean by that? Usually, parents would get a supply list, you know, things might come in and they're put there in sort of a community place where, you know, where kid, everyone is kind of using them. That may not, is not going to be the case. And we also know that we will have parents who will send children with their own little bottles of hand sanitizer and such, and will make, make arrangements for them to have that available to them at all times. But we anticipate that those supply lists are going to look a little bit different. And this is not just for us, for, for us within the school district of Haverford Township. Springfield School District, Chichester, Rose Tree, Interboro, Westchester, Ridley, Garnet Valley, Marple, and Wallingford Swarthmore are all, we have all been working together looking at what, what it would look like, because that, they are looking at five days a week with everyone coming in. The only exception to that list is at Interboro, they still do not know that they can do that at their high school level. So it may be something a little bit different, but K to 8, they will all be in school, in school five days a week. So we've got, you know, great opportunities to pool together with those surround, those surrounding districts and continue our discussions around planning. As we, if a change occurs, and either the change occurs by more restrictive direction, and if you can, a restrictive direction to be more restrictive in any way, or we find out that in, in yellow, we cannot offer instruction the way that it has been offered. We have been discussing what a hybrid model, you know, using some type of a flexible schedule. You heard Ms. Mathers talk about, you know, children are in school for two days, there's a day of intense cleaning, and then another group would come for the, the other two days. There's also a model where you bring some students in every day and you teach some students remotely. And that's sort of what, what Interboro is looking at, you know, K to 8, they're coming in all day, and they may be remote at their secondary level. If we looked at something like that, I, I do think it's important to say, you know, that regardless of whether you're in every day or, you know, 100% remote, students would still be able to participate in any kind of activity that we would be permitted to run. We would not say because you're participating in remote learning, you can't join whatever the club is or, or activity. And we'll talk more in detail at the next meeting about what some of those models would look like and what the classrooms could potentially look like. We, and we know that if we are back in red, that it is everybody virtual. And that is, again, I want to reiterate, that is not Haverford Online. On, the Haverford Online information will be, this is the same slide that was in the July 2nd communication, but we've got more information, as I said, at our next meeting. We will talk about an opportunity to give people a little bit of insight into what Haverford Online will entail for children at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at the high school level, because it would not be the same, you know, for, for all of them. And then finally, we, you know, our next steps for parents and guardians, you know, view the meeting next week so that people can learn what Haverford Online is, what it has to offer. We are working on a survey. We thought we would send the survey out tomorrow, but we have decided there are probably a lot of people who would say, I want more information about Haverford Online before I respond to the survey. So we are going to have that survey, and, and this is it. It will not be, as I mentioned before, it's not a long, long laundry list of questions. We're going to be asking about the intent for the children to attend in-person school, the intent for children to participate in Haverford Online, the intent to use district transportation. And as I said, these are a very rough draft form, but I wanted people to know it's not a long survey that we would be sending out, out to them. So that gives you a little bit of update on the decisions we've been able to make if we are five-day in-person in the schools. There are any questions?
Laura.
Hi, thanks, Dr. Rishi. I did have a few questions. For specifically the younger kids who are going to be sort of immobilized in their classrooms to minimize movement around the school, is there any thought about giving them additional PE time outdoors or additional recess time outdoors, especially where they could maybe take mask breaks and building that into the schedule? Is that something that's being considered?
Yes, I was just, I just jumped into a meeting the elementary principals are having today, and, and when I came in, they were talking about mask breaks and, and how, and the importance of getting students outside more, you know, more often when they can.
Great. And then Ms. Mathers mentioned that for, specifically for the, the schools that don't have air conditioning that we might want to get, I think she said it was an environmental, an engineer, environmental consultant to come in. Is that something that we're thinking about doing? Because that, I mean, not having air conditioning plus wearing a mask plus, you know, minimal airflow through the space, that does seem like a health risk.
Yes. And we do already have, Dr. Crispin, Environmental Consultants Incorporated that already had an agreement with, with the district longstanding. They have been guiding us in some aspects of this plan, and I jotted that down when she mentioned that to follow up.
Good, great. And then something that I'm concerned about moving to the future, I think we all know that at some point we are probably going to be back in yellow or even red. I hope that we're not, but we probably will be. And one main concern is if we have to move to some sort of a hybrid plan where especially the younger, the younger kids are only going to school maybe every other day, or only two days a week, or something like that. That leaves parents who have to continue working in a pretty significant bind in terms of supervising their kids and trying to supervise their learning for the days that they're learning online. Have we considered talking with maybe the township and local childcare providers just to figure out maybe some, some kind of arrangement that parents, probably the, the school district wouldn't be responsible for it, but just some, something that parents could have more information about so that parents could be proactive in lining something up should the need arise?
We're meeting, Nicole Battistelli and I are going to be meeting with the child, local childcare providers before the end of this month. I don't know that there's a date yet, but I will certainly let the board know when that is occurring. Our purpose for asking them to meet with us is so that we can make sure they are aware of, of our plans and what the plans would look like so that, that maybe they can make some modifications to, you know, to what they are offering.
Okay, great. And then my last question. For, for masking for, for students, not for teachers and staff, but for students. I'm assuming that students are going to need to wear probably a few different masks during the day, so they're going to have to have a stash of masks with them, because when they take it off for lunch, they would probably put a different one on. Or, you know, if they did PE, it would be sweaty and it wouldn't be as effective, that sort of thing. So, so kids are going to need to have a lot of masks with them in their classroom at any given time. And I know right now, a lot of parents are having a difficulty like getting enough masks for their kids, just because locally there seem to be some mask shortages now that the, the universal masking requirements are in place. Is it possible that the school district could buy child-sized or like young adult-sized masks in bulk and then find a way to, you know, like, like we do like athletics fee or something like that to distribute those so that students could, or parents actually could have a much easier way to get masks? And then it would also be the kind of mask that we would want. And it could actually be cheaper if we do that. If we do it both, we could have some economies of scale so that we could help parents have the right thing easier, less expensive. Is that a possibility?
We can, we can look into that. We have ordered, you know, so that we have some.
Right.
But yes, we can look at that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I'm done with questions.
Bridgette.
I think you just gave all the PTOs some spiritware ideas there. And I, my question was, Dr. Rishi, on your last side in talking about a survey, and I just want to be clear on what that is. In other contexts, we have issued surveys, and it was kind of a general polling and a community barometer, but this sounded more like kind of a each family electing the choice for their family. And could you just speak to the distinction and kind of how binding the response to the survey in July might be?
This, I had, it's not binding. Do you know, like, if, if a parent came and said, you know, we, we answered this question, you know, for whatever reason, now we're not going to send our child to school, we're, we want the Haverford Online option, we would never say no. This is going to help us for our planning purposes. And where, you know, it becomes really critical for us is actually to get more of a sense of how many people are, would want the Haverford Online option, no matter what the district comes up with. Because that has staffing implications for us to, you know, to look at how many of those students, and then do we, is it enough students that we can then look at the staff across the district and reassign some of the staff across the district to Haverford Online? Or is it going to require that we, you know, hire additional staff? And that, if we don't get enough people into Haverford Online, that will, it will require hiring additional staff. And we want to make sure that we, any hiring that we have to do, that we have people on, you know, on time. The other area that's really critical for us is the transportation piece, because the difference between, you know, even 10 bus runs to Manoa and 22 bus runs to Manoa has a tremendous impact upon what the day will look like, both in terms of arrival and dismissal. But it's not, I can't say it's, I can't say once you choose this, you can't go back.
And so then it would be fair to say that participating in the survey isn't the final step in a process. If somebody then wanted to enroll in Haverford Online, it, there would be paperwork and things like that beyond just clicking a response in the survey.
Yes, what will happen, thank you for that question. What will happen is the people who indicate that they definitely want to participate in Haverford Online, they will be sent information to, to get that process moving so that their child can be, you know, enrolled in there.
Ari.
Thank you. Dr. Rishi, those images that you shared with us from Manoa lunchroom and classroom were very helpful. Thank you. I didn't see any social or physical distancing Xs or blue tape. A lot of us are probably pretty comfortable and familiar with those cues from going to the grocery store or just living life in a pandemic. Do you have plans to incorporate some signs or some blue tape or some ways to help? Like, let's say a student doesn't come, you obviously can't put a chair on that desk because it could block the view of another student. So you would want to be able to help everyone know not to sit in that desk, not use it, not go anywhere near it, and this way we can enforce physical distancing in our classrooms and lunchrooms.
Yes, that, all that has been ordered, it's actually, we actually used our CARES Act money for, to make those purchases, tape signage.
Wonderful.
Kristin.
Yeah, I'm, so I'm just wondering about the survey that's going to be going out. Will there also be a question about the hybrid model? I see the two, either in-person or online options, but nothing in between.
If, as long, as we can, as much as we can describe it, sure. You know, I want to have more of a description. I don't want to frustrate people too much, you know, asking them to choose something that we've not thoroughly described. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to describe that and then put that off.
Okay. And I apologize if I missed this. In the survey, will parents be indicating their names and addresses? I'm just wondering if this could be a good preliminary staff, step to determine bus routes and who will be using which transportation services?
Will, it'll tie back, it ties back to an email address. Is that our primary method of, of communication? And they will be identifying, like, you know, Haverford Middle School, 7th grade, you know, Manoa Elementary School, 4th grade, like, they will be, will be asking them to complete that for each child, but we're looking if we can do it a little bit differently this time and not have them do the whole thing all over. Like, you log in once and you complete for each, for each child.
Got it. Okay, so this won't be anonymous, it will be?
No, we can, we can get back to, to, and that's how we'll send them the information then for Haverford Online and start that process.
Perfect. Thanks.
Bridgette, you have another question?
Just to follow up, because I wasn't clear on your response to Ms. Larson. So in the survey, if the district's recommendation in the green phase is to go back and have kids be in school five days a week as much as possible, is there still a survey option for people to elect a hybrid? Or are the choices to go with the district plan or Haverford Online?
It, it cannot be both. So if the question is, if we can get enough information and see how, how we can make it work, the question I imagine would read something to extent of, I intend for my child or children to attend. the question I imagine would read something to the extent of, I intend for my child or children to attend in-person school. And then maybe down next to that, only if it is, you know, a hybrid option or, you know, either. Something like some kind of wording there. It's a draft that we're still, you know, working on. Or the other one, you know, intend for my children to participate in Haverford Online.
So it wouldn't be that we have some portion of the students who are attending full day, some who are doing a hybrid, and some who are on, have referred online?
Yeah, we can't staff that. We can't staff it, and we can't supervise or monitor those, you know, having those three options simultaneously.
Right, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Dr. Ruchi. Our next agenda.